Pass that over. We'll just, yeah, we'll just do that again. Good evening, everyone. This council meeting November seventh, twenty twenty-three is called to order. Anyone in the audience need any amplify headphones, please raise your hand and we will deliver those to you. I've not seen any. So that's all right for the pledge, please. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Uh, yeah.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman, here. Councilmember who's here is.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Dowell.
Present.
The councilmember here is.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Counsel, have any late changes to the agenda? City manager, any late change?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one change tonight. Item F three under the action agenda. Uh, we'll be removing that designated crisis responder contract tonight as we have a couple edits from both attorneys on each side of cities attorneys and there's some other health organizations that we just weren't ready to present to you tonight. So we'll have that later date.
Are we still on track then to execute though for next year?
We anticipate to have that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, city manager. Counsel, have any board reports to share? All right, moving on. Has everyone reviewed the item consent agenda? Maybe have a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. We have some presentations tonight. Our first one is is from Liz Arborl from the Historical Society.
Hi.
Hi there. I have, actually I have two, they're short. Uh, first one being the Cruisin' Through Nine Car Show, which took place on, was it August? Twenty-seven, that Sunday, anyway. Um, it was a partnership with the Downtown Merchants Association. Um, Amy Cooper really spearheaded it. She did a fantastic job. She put it together, we put it together in probably about six to eight weeks. We had um about a hundred and fifty cars, a little over, um including cars from, of course, from Washington, Idaho and Oregon. Um, there was a show the previous day, so we did have people come and stay overnight so that they could hit both shows and um we had total expenses of about forty-seven hundred dollars. As far as attendance, you know, with a hundred and fifty cars, you have probably at least three hundred people, you know, in the cars and then the people, you know, who just came down to see it, you know, we're guessing, you know, there were probably somewhere between eight, nine hundred people. So, but that's an unscientific number. So I guess that, sorry, I just started.
I didn't want to go ahead.
So I think we're done with that part.
Right. Any comments or questions on that one?
Any questions?
It was nice to have it back.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah.
I think that's why we had such a good turnout was because there the, um, there was history behind it and people were kind of watching for it, so.
And I would, I would agree on your eight hundred to a thousand people down over there, because I was there most of the day. And there's a lot of people. So, all right. Now our next report is from Liz as well.
Yes, so, um this one I'll try and follow along and remember that I put slides together for it. So this is our third quarter report for our lodging tax for the museum. No worries. Um, so over third quarter, we had about eight hundred and eighty people total come through the museum. Of those uh who traveled greater than fifty miles, there was about two hundred and thirteen. And out of that, two hundred and thirteen, about twenty of those were international. If I'm remembering correctly, I think we had people from Australia, New Zealand. And then, of course, Canada. And we get the occasional person from um South America too, which is kind of fun. Our traffic on our Facebook page is doing well. Um, we had a little blip I, in Facebook. I shared something about the um oh dang it, I forgot the name, the movie, you know, that, that, you know, where they put the train off the bridge.
Ring of Fire.
Thank you. Um, and so that just blew up. We had like a hundred thousand people, you know, it was it was crazy. So anyway, I took that out of the, most of the numbers because it was an aberration. So, yes, the car show um went well and um and next slide, please. So we have become a partner in the Maritime Washington National Heritage Area. So this is through the um national, no, Washington Trust for Historic Preservation and they are looking at our working waterfronts. Aquaculture, all of that, and how it ties into our heritage in this area. Um, and it extends from the Columbia River up to Bellingham and north to the border. So there's, I think it's going to be a great way to kind of tie our history together because all of it is connected to the water, logging, you know, shellfish, everything. Um, so it's, I think it's really exciting. I'm, I'm happy to try to get us involved um with that. So, and then I'm currently working on this. My eyeballs are ready to fall out. I'm looking at so many photographs. But um, this is one of the photographs of Dennis Muir, who took a bunch of photographs in like hundreds and hundreds of photographs in the late sixties, early seventies. This woman was um working at the tree farm in, I think, nineteen sixty-eight, so no wonder she looks tired. Um, so we will be getting rid of our vintage clothes, not getting rid of them, but packing them up and um having the photography within the next few weeks. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, that's it. So, are there any questions?
All right. Comments or questions?
Have a comment. Railroad Avenue is a perfect place for all these events. They just, and so it was great to have such a good turnout of the car show.
Yeah.
Um, I was in the museum the other day and it, people need to go in it, it's huge range and spruce things up and it looked really nice in there.
Well, thank you. And today I had to go home and change because today I was crawling around on the floor. We're putting um, we're putting up new walls for the exhibits and um we painted them a couple of weeks ago and so now I'm and you know, it's, it's just getting better.
Yeah.
It'll never be perfect in my eyes, but we're working on it.
Well, it looks really good in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And now we have a presentation for the, for the Operation Green Light. Um, I don't know if everybody's aware, we have three veterans on our, on our council. We have Deputy Mayor Schmidt, Councilmember Sherman and Councilman um Bowd, which I don't see him right now, uh, but Councilmember Sherman is going to read the proclamation.
There he is.
There he is. Army guy.
All right. City of Shelton, Operation Green Light for Veterans, November sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the residents of the City of Shelton have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the City of Shelton seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of it all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community, in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious and civil service groups and service lovers, whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the City of Shelton appreciates the sacrifices of our you, United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for veterans. The City of Shelton hereby declares November sixth through twelve as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, therefore be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, the City of Shelton encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable, immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Signed the seventh day, November in Shelton, Washington, twenty twenty-three. By our mayor Eric.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherman, and thank you for your service and Deputy Mayor, thank you for your service and also Councilmen's vote. All right.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, as you'll see, uh, walking in tonight, we have the green lights at the front of the city center, uh, signifying uh, further the proclamation, really those up past, uh, past the twelfth as well, um, to continue, um, signifying, uh, the importance of this proclamation.
What do you want to do, please? I guess, uh.
Happy to make sure everyone's well prepared.
All right. What do we do?
Right.
Like.
There's two more here. For someone out there. And I have mine on my court.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Love that.
Okay, Finance Director Mike Gettis, the information for us updating our fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of town. It feels like we've been talking about the development of the twenty twenty-four budget for a long time, which I think puts us in a really good position, um, just to, as it comes up on the screen, to give you a little bit of history and remind you where we've been. Um, we started twenty twenty-three with a task force, the Financial Sustainability Task Force that we met with over the course of four months. They made some recommendations. I think that served to really inform members of our community about what we do as a city in particular, the general fund, and as their um, the title of that group was to make recommendations for the sustainability of our finances in the city. As you know, during the course of the twenty twenty-three fiscal year, um, we took a look at the budget and really, um I think through work with you have done some um informational kinds of um reports and giving you a lot of data. Did I skip ahead to the budget? We should be on something else.
Fee schedule.
I'm sorry.
You're gonna come back around.
So excited for the budget, but that leads us so well into the fee schedule because that's a big part of the budget. Anyway, the master fee schedule is before you and we have some subject matter. I was already, the budget came to come, excited about it. So the there are such matter experts. I'm really just the gatherer of information on the master fee schedule, but this sets the fees. Um, last year, we didn't get this to you um in time to implement it effective January first of the fiscal year. Getting it to you in really concert with the budget. Um, much of the budget, um, in particular, um, for the enterprise funds are in this fee schedule. You've had it before you. We have prepared a document that shows the fees as they are with the most recent version in twenty twenty-three with changes that are being recommended by the different departments. So I'll put it back to you, Mayor, and for council, if you have any questions that we can answer in staff.
All right. Are there any questions? I, I mean, I had some concerns about some of the fees that were in there and I called our city manager and he explained them to me and so I'm a I'm, I'm okay with moving forward with it. I would probably like to see more of a study session on fee increases so we can actually have a discussion, I mean, on like line items. Um, there's, there's quite a few increases in here and I think it would've been nice for us to have, you know, discussion on, on most of them, but uh, I did go through all of them and I did talk to the city manager about the ones I was concerned about and and, and I'm okay with moving forward with it if, uh, rest of councils. All right. Then anybody else have any questions? Anyone send up a public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't.
All right. Anyone want to talk about this? All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we afford revolution number one, two, nine, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three. The action agenda on the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three council meeting, for further consideration.
Second. All right. I kind of jumped ahead earlier. Comments or questions?
Real quick question. I scroll through and I just caught those displays on city messages boards, three hundred and fifty dollars. So does that mean I can put a display message on a board for three hundred and fifty bucks?
Thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five?
So it was thirty, yeah, and that's on the digital reader boards on
Yeah.
Both sides.
The strikeout there is a little.
That's what I'm seeing. Okay, okay.
So.
Okay, that's what that is. All right.
Community service anyway, right?
There's a specific policy that dictates who can and what types of messages.
Correct.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. I know.
It looks like three hundred and fifty dollars, but.
Uh, one other item to bring to your attention is the um special event permits. We added a tier two in there for events that may be of um, uh, not of, I guess, general community interest. They might be uh, commercial events or some events such as that. They're ticketed, they're age restricted, or something like that. In a general community, it's not the Fourth Festival Parade or something like that. And so what we want to do is uh, we're proposing it anyway at this point is to capture actual cost performance city functions to, to um maintain, manage, and um and provide the necessary infrastructure for those events. So what we do in that case, since they vary greatly, right, from a one block street closure to you know, to the entire, you know, length of railroad from first to seventh, uh, what we do is we, we provide an estimate. Our staff have worked on a gathering as much information as they can throughout the years for how much time it takes, materials it takes to provide that, those services for, for different events throughout the year. So we'd be able to provide an estimate at the time of the application of special events. So the individual or group would know what those cars, costs are upfront before they move forward.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to forward resolution number one, two, nine, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three to the act agenda of November twenty-first. For further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. We have another item from Mike relating to B and O taxes.
Yes, thank you. So as you know, we did spend quite a bit of time on, no. The, we had a study session on the B and O tax. Just to go back to my earlier comments, the Financial Sustainability Task Force looked at this as one of the mechanisms that are under um your control as council to um increase the radar. Um, we've done some planning internally in the finance department. Um, should you move forward with this as the direction you gave us in the study session to communicate with our um business partners in um, getting the word out on this so that they can plan for it. So we have some strategies um, that we'll use um as we send out, depending on your direction with the ordinance um, in the upcoming mailings when we send out the annual quarterly and then monthly um reports that we do. And we can also send um a message to everyone. So we've got some plans for that. The ordinance also updates the um Shelton Municipal Code three point five two as you gave us direction in the study session to um, strike, if you will, the rather archaic um exemptions that were in there. And so we um had this reviewed early by our legal counsel. And we bring before you then tonight this updated B and O model.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, there isn't.
Anyone like to speak on B and O taxes? All right. Maybe we have a reading of resolution or ordinance number two, zero, one, six, dash, one, zero, two, three.
Orness number two, zero, one, six, dash, one, zero, two, three. And ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter three point five two of the Shelton Municipal Code related to business and occupation tax.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we afford ordinance number two, zero, one, six, one, zero, two, three to the action agenda on November twenty-first, going to come to the council meeting for the consideration.
Second. All right. Comments or questions? Councilmember Bowd, any comments? All right. We have a motion to second to forward ordinance number two, zero, one, six, dash, one, zero, two, three to the action agenda of November twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, we're assessing for a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Mike has an ordinance regarding the twenty twenty-four budget, primary budget.
Yes, so the document that we've worked so hard on, and as I started the presentation about the twenty twenty-four budget has involved um a lot of preparedness. Not that certainly we haven't as a city in the past, but I think our, our, our full effort was really in this to make sure that the twenty twenty-four budget is balanced so that ongoing expenditures are matched with ongoing revenues. So that we're not in a position to have to look at this in mid-year barring any kind of unforeseen economic conditions that might dictate that. But we've budgeted in a way that we can sustain this. So really what we're looking at, I would like to stress, is not just twenty twenty-four but also with much of the direction you've given us and some of the action that you're um going to take to sustain this through our good stewardship beyond just twenty twenty-four and into the following couple of fiscal years. And I think that's um something that our citizens should feel good about because we're in a position to maintain the services that not just the general fund provides, but the enterprise funds as well that are crucial services for our citizens. As I mentioned earlier, we had a lot of involvement in the budget. Not only did we have an outside citizen group um convened to really learn about the general fund, we formed a subcommittee with city council members to work with us. We've also, I think, through the monthly financial reports, not only to you, but to our public, been very transparent about how we're trying to um bring our expenses in line and be good stewards with the tax dollars that were given, but also plan for the future. And so we've taken a really good, long look at the budget. It's, it's actually an important document because it's that plan for the next fiscal year. Um, it certainly isn't just finance that puts this together. Um, city staff in all, um, not just directors, but um, we rely, work so closely with Public Works. Um, Public Works Director, um, Jay Harris and Superintendent Fran Armstrong are critical to this because so much happens in the water sewer, um, storm drainage funds and the capital funds there. I know you've heard a lot throughout this year about the plans that they have. So we've tried in, in so many ways through study sessions and at council meetings to make sure that we're communicating with you and our public and what our plans are with this budget document. And so um it begins with a letter from the city manager. I encourage um members of the public to read that. Um, it really outlines so much of what um we've done. I don't know if you want to make any comments now before I get into some of the meat of the budget, but I'll.
Um, I, I just wanted to reiterate what Mike is saying, that our entire staff has been intimately involved through this process since essentially April one, when I sat in his chair. Um, it's been labor intensive. It's been um, uh I guess, not so pleasant at times, but also um the, the good part of this is the team has come together and worked really hard. And I'm really proud of, of the group of employees we have here to, to work towards these goals. Um, one thing that Mike did kind of say, I want to reiterate, the living document, right? This budget goes on throughout the year. We, we adopt it by the end of the year, but we're monitoring it, this and managing this on a constant and continuous basis. So it's not one and done and put on the shelf and walked away from. Uh, each department's responsible for their, their departmental budgets. They monitor those. They report accordingly. We make adjustments accordingly. Uh, we have to monitor our revenue streams at the same time as we monitor expenditures. So um, it's a, it's an ongoing process that happens throughout the year. And as Mike also said, we are looking forward to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, make sure we're sustainable and we don't get to the point of a supplemental budget like we saw earlier this year, um, with the reductions and the heavy reductions that we, that we face this year. We want to get ahead of those uh, in a reasonable amount of time. So uh, they don't, we don't impact uh, some of the, some of the crucial, crucial city services that we provide.
And it starts all over again in six months for twenty twenty-five. We started this, what, in May? About May.
Kind of January, really, when the task force was convened, in some ways, really looking at the plan, I would say, but in earnest, certainly in April.
Yeah.
Um, if, if we could go to, I'm going to take us through just some highlights since this is our really one chance to get in depth with this a bit. So on um uh, page two, you'll find exhibit A. Or B, one of the exhibits, sorry. You'll find an exhibit A that summarizes the expenditures across all of the funds. So the total budget, when we talk about what is the city's total budget, it's forty-four million, sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars at this first reading. Just like with S N P D, no sooner do we get this brought to you and some minor changes occur where we need to make sure we're reflecting as up-to-date information as we can. So in the second budget presentation, there may be a slight variance to that. Um, I'll certainly point it out where it would occur. I don't see anything really dramatic changing. Um, but this breaks down each of the funds and what we are proposing as expenditures within them. And I'll get into a little bit more of that with some of the funds. I know that for people that aren't familiar with the municipal budget, it can be a little bit daunting when you look at that. But just to remind um our citizens, the general fund is really what funds the operations of the city that people probably see and, and feel every day from public safety to street operations and maintenance, our parks and recreation, our animal shelter, all of those things are what are really coming one way or another through the general fund and operate. And then, of course, our enterprise funds where people pay for a service like water, sewer, the storm drainage, and then the capital funds associated with that. On um, I think then next we have exhibit B. Um, which summarizes excuse me, it summarizes the estimated beginning fund balances that we're projecting at the end of twenty twenty-three, the twenty twenty-four proposed revenue, the twenty twenty-four proposed expenditures, and then what I want to draw your attention to is that proposed ending balance of each of the funds because the um thing that I'll just advise that you want to see here is a positive number. You want to know that we're projecting that even if we're using some beginning fund balance in combination with our revenue, that then our expenditures are leaving an ending fund balance. And staff worked very hard to make sure that this is balanced, that it's meeting the policies that you have set for the various funds and that we can still get the work done that we talked to you about in study sessions and in preparing this. So then, beginning on page three is a description by fund, um, by the, of the F T E. Um, I want to spend just a little bit of time on this page because um page, this page really depicts kind of where we've been as city manager Ziegler talked about. Um, we brought to you a twenty twenty-three supplemental budget that reduced some staffing. In that, I think we learned a lot. We were trying to balance a twenty twenty-three budget. In that, I think we learned a lot. We were trying to balance a twenty twenty three budget to ongoing um revenues. Um, through that, we've been able and and then some staffing transitions that ensued, we really learned. Kind of where some reductions hit us pretty hard. Um, I'm bringing up just an example of something that we're adding back in. And that's um, we're recommending um a halftime customer service position. So we reduced hours at the front desk. We're not recommending change that will change those. We're just. Adding back a halftime position. When we um get in busy times, we end up pulling other staff in and that really affects how much we can do. And so this halftime position is funded largely through the water and sewer fund. And so that was just an example of something. Where we learned, you know, this, we think we can be um smarter about how we staff. And that halftime position will really free up some staff and other areas that are having to be called up. To um work on that. So that's really kind of a highlight of of where we go from that twenty twenty three supplemental. To the twenty twenty four proposed budget. You'll notice that there it's, we're showing an increase in F T E on municipal court. They're not actually getting more people, but we weren't accurately reporting that. The judges' hours had increased and we have a. Part-time position in there. We want to be transparent and have the actual F T E that we're funding um observed in here. I will point out some reductions that um have occurred due to attrition that we're recommending not fill, that we not fill. Um, I think we've um alluded to this and some of you know, um, we had a resignation of our administrative services director. Um, we're not refilling that position. Um, instead, we are breaking that out now with a human resources position. And then the admin services director goes away, human resources falls under the city manager and our information technology staff member. Falls under the finance department. So we were able to realize some reductions there. The other reduction occurs um in parks, rec and facilities. So we had reduced a custodian at that mid-year supplemental. And then with your um putting um former director Ziegler in the city manager role. And doing some arrangement of staff, that's another um director position that's eliminated. So we've. Um, really eliminated some high level positions to try to bring this. Um, again, I think it speaks to our work towards sustaining this budget and really. Making sure that we can live as well as as we can within our means for more than just next year, but looking beyond it. So that's what brings us down to that final F T E in this proposed budget at sixty five point four eight. Um, across the general fund and then across all funds. There weren't any um reductions. Um, in the other city funds, street, water, sewer, storm and E um E M and R, equipment, maintenance and rental. So the total F T E for the city is ninety nine point five three just um that's budgeted in what you presented tonight.
And Mike, to clarify, that's what we're budgeting for. It doesn't necessarily mean every position is filled.
Correct.
That's something that we are always considering when it relates to positions not filled and we have increased overtime costs, et cetera. Um, so even though, for example, it says twenty one police full time. That's not what we currently have. That's what we're budgeting for. That's what we're planning for.
So. Again, I wanted to spend just a little time on that because it is the thing, you know, as most public agencies, it takes. The people to make what we do happen. And so that's where so much of the heart and soul of the budget is, is in staffing. And I think not only for our staff, our community, for you as council, we're well planned now so that we don't have to revisit. As we did mid-year twenty twenty three to make reductions. At this point, we are budgeted for not only twenty twenty four, but beyond that. To sustain this level of staffing. So. That I think is something that speaks well to all of the staff and directors have worked really hard to make sure that we're there because as. We pointed out, we don't want to be in that position again. So the moving on kind of through the rest of the budget, just some highlights, because um I think. Um, what you know about this, we've spent so much time, I'm not trying to um take away from anything. But a big part of the general fund budget is, of course, public safety. Um, I believe we've captured the true costs of. Um, offering um paying for our fire and emergency medical services, as you know, that's based on our. Um, inter-local agreement with Central Mason Fire. Um, it's based on our assessed value that came in at a different rate. So we were under budgeted. I think we've captured that more fully for twenty twenty four as best as I can estimate. Um, as you mentioned, our um police staffing remains the same. That budget is intact. And in fact, we're. Putting some investment towards um quite a few things in the general fund that really um I think. Work towards um investing in our assets and what we have. So an example of what's in here is. The purchase of one police vehicle so that we can keep up with that important um investment for our community and not. Um, just run them till they can't be driven anymore and then come to you in a panic mode of how we're going to. Um, replace a police vehicle. So we're trying our best to use the money that we're given to reinvest in the ways. Um, that we can. As you know, the general fund supports the street operations. There's a budgeted four hundred thousand dollar. Transfer from the general fund into the street fund and we're using, um, as you had um guided us. Um, some T P D money towards um maintenance and operations of street. Um, later in the budget and another fund, the tourism fund proposed budget is included. Based on the recommendations that were given to you. Um, that's using utilizing some of the fund balance. To promote tourism in the Shelton, in the city of Shelton. And so that's really. A positive thing through the presentations and study sessions that you have this year, you've heard a lot about the projects plan. That involve the enterprise funds, including the water capital fund, the sewer capital fund and storm drainage capital fund. We're happy to talk more about those, but they're listed throughout the budget document. Again, this is really our um guide for the year ahead and so many things that we do. And it's an ambitious guide that um department directors have planned, but I think um the citizens of our community will. Um, see the results of this in so many ways as the um calendar year unfolds. Um, another thing I wanted to point out, sometimes our best laid plans are to get things done and they don't quite happen as we planned. Um, we were anticipating um of of an award from the Department of Commerce to redo the library debt. As you know, we're partners in that with Timberland Regional Library. That was budgeted in twenty twenty three. We're moving it forward in twenty twenty four. So all the same committed funds, the city general fund has a commitment, Timberland Regional Library does the grant. And then the library endowment fund that we hold. So that is planned in there as one of the projects. But I'll stop there and um. Myself and city staff are happy to answer questions that you might have as you looked over the twenty twenty four budget document.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, has anyone signed up for public testimony? Anybody like to speak on our primary budget? All right. Maybe I have a reading of ordinance number two zero one three dash zero nine two three.
Or does number two zero one three dash zero nine two three? And ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for calendar year twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we forward ordinance number two zero one three dash zero nine two three. With November twenty first action agenda, which is consideration.
Second.
Right, comments or questions?
I'd just like to express my gratitude to staff. Um, you know, as a member of the subcommittee that worked on this budget, I know we asked a lot of hard questions. I know you. Put a lot of hard questions to yourselves and to your programs and. It's very evident that a lot of data went into creating this document. It was a very strategic and intentional effort. And I know it was not an easy thing to do. Um, thank you for providing us with good information to make good decisions. And for really, you know, examining this at the deepest level possible to make sure that we have a sustainable budget. And being realistic about what our commitments are and what we're able to deliver to the public. So just want to express my gratitude to everyone who's part of that process.
Thanks, Mike. I was noticing that we uh we probably have a true cost finally for this quality. I see that we're uh budgeting. Uh, five hundred and four thousand dollars for for jail services next year. Which is twice what we did prior to, you know, squally last year, correct? So we're still. Used to do about two fifty, two seventy.
Before it's quality.
Before the squall, yeah. So we're still committed to uh, we'll be accountable.
Absolutely.
In the jail system. Um, do we know what what was the cost for uh?
Yeah, we, it it's fluctuated. Obviously, the beginning of the year was a lot less than it's been recently. I think our monthly um.
Between twenty and thirty thousand.
Something to that extent.
So we definitely have enough enough in there to.
Yes, we have better data in order to establish um. A budget.
And that's just for miss falling. When I say twenty to thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Just.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to forward ordinance number two zero one three dash zero nine two three to November twenty first. Action agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Public hearing is closed and we're open another public hearing. Our last item, Mike, is an ordinance regarding ad DeLorean taxes.
Yes, thank you. So much as I said, um, in our earlier um board meeting with the park district, we don't have. Firm assessed value numbers. A couple of things that I will tell you, we've um, you know, the in, the one percent increase is not very much. On either of these. Um, we were fortunate, a year ago, August, voters renewed the EMS levy. So we now have. This year for calculation of property taxes, a highest lawful levy because it's reset after voters did that. So. Once we get the numbers from. The assessor will update this again, hoping it's for the next reading, but otherwise we'll make sure that. We schedule something so that we can meet the statute. Um. Uh, another comment just about the emergency medical services levy, that um is really an amount plus some that we use. Then to um fund our fire and emergency medical services through Central Mason Fire. So it's just a part of that. But it certainly um is a huge help. And so um we're committed as three year goal to public safety. And that's a big part of this. So um. Again, once we have um firm numbers, which will hopefully be this week, so that they can go on the packet for the twenty first. Otherwise, we'll have communication to you about our recommended plan.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, has anyone signed up for public testimony?
No, there isn't.
Anybody want to speak on that DeLorean? Maybe I have a reading of ordinance number two zero one four dash zero nine two three.
Or does number two zero one four dash zero nine two three? And ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, setting the amount of the annual add more taxes in the city of Shelton for calendar year twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we forward ordinance number two zero one four dash zero nine two three to the November twenty first council meeting. Uh, for the consideration.
All right, comments or questions? Right, we have a motion to second to forward ordinance number two zero one four. Dash zero nine two three to November twenty one council meeting for next scheduled public hearing for the consideration to allow the public. Another opportunity to be heard on the ordinance under consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Public hearing is closed, back to our regular meeting. Capital project manager Aaron Nix has information for about a contract award for well one pipeline pressurization.
Mayor. Mayor Protem, uh, council, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. Um, this project is going to be familiar to you. Because we talked, we just talked about it in um a work study session a couple of weeks ago. Can you put up the map of the project area, please? As you recall, uh, we have a significant water project that we're we're trying to undertake. Um, this is kind of last remnants of the old water system. Um, you can see there, the pink area basically outlines. The project area. What we're attempting to do is we're going to basically convert a a gravity fed water system. And make it pressurized. So we're going to take, um, and it goes from well number one to the Springs Road. That's all open cut area. We'll be replacing brand new pipe. From there, that's about eight hundred linear feet from the spring site all the way down to the high school. That's about thirty eight hundred linear feet. And what we'll be doing is pushing a twelve inch duct lined iron pipe through a twenty. And twenty four inch cast iron pipe. With the intent, again, to pressurize the system, gravity uh without pressure, allow, it doesn't. It doesn't automatically mean you're going to get contaminants in, but it's just a different, it's a better system because you've kind of sealed the system. So. Fortunately, we had our bid opening today, uh, the uh, and we got some some great bids. Uh, the engineer's estimate was about one point nine five million dollars. The low one, we got two low bids. The one uh was for two million forty thousand, two hundred and seventeen thousand. So it's about. Hundred thousand or so, a little bit more than the engineer's estimate. Uh, the other one was at two point two one million dollars. So. There's no formal announcement that will happen at your next meeting. If you uh decide to put this in the action agenda. I will tell you, Jay um did a great job of ensuring that we have budget for this and we have plenty to cover that. As well as um the other things. So. Happy to answer any questions. The intent here, you guys, again, is to make it, uh, bring it, be transparent, bring the project towards, let the public hear about it. On your business agenda. My hope is that we can award this on the twenty first. So and get to work. So, thank you.
All right, Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody want to speak? All right, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we forward well, number one project pipeline preservation project to the council's agenda for number twenty first for the consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I have a. Comment. So by putting the pipe in the pipe, that that for the pressurization, but also does that preserve? That pipe for many more years?
So the, we're not as worried with regard to the old pipe. We're we're. And this is something that we discussed at length uh when we were designing this thing. The idea being it's just a casing for it. We're actually going to fill it. Uh, the outside of the the new pipe and then the outside area, we're going to fill that in with grout. So that it, when it, when it does fail, those things settle, it won't settle and we won't have a foot. Dip in our roadway. So that's what we're trying to do. I think in casing it, Jay, I don't. Encasing it in the in the grout probably does increase the 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 life of the pipe itself, I suspect.
The the pipe itself is a hundred plus years that we're putting inside the casing, right? Um, longer than that, most likely. So um anyways, but with crowding in in place in the carrier pipe, um, this is going to be around for a long, long time.
And and even decreasing the the pipe size because it's going from an open gravity fit system. We're not actually filling that two foot pipe today anyways. Right? So going down to the twelve, the one foot pipe or whatever, we're not going to lose capacity. And we'll be losing potentially less chemical to treat the water, uh, less chlorination, et cetera. So moneyhead, great, excellent, good project, guys. Thank you. So, I'm just curious about how you just like put a pipe in a pipe and it makes, is it like soft or?
No, um, typically you will have, so what we're going to do is we're, it's not the lineable pipe, it's actually H D P E pipe, which is the. You've seen it, it's that black pipe, very thick walled stuff. They actually fuse it onsite, meaning they will. Drag one and push one through and as they're lighting up the next one, they'll actually, what they call that fuse it, they will actually burn it together. So what you're getting is a single piece of pipe with no joints in essence. So it's very well known, we've done this a lot. Um, uh, again, the intent is, and what we at least prescribed, the contractor will have to come back to us with their methodology. Some of the thoughts that we put into the design is actually putting rollers on them so that I ideally what they'll do is they'll start the pipe. Have a very long rope or something to the other end where they want to drag it through and they'll start yanking it through. Pulling it through and they'll but use it as they go and all the way through. And that makes it to the end and they grow out the ends. Ground the pipe and you're good to go.
So all the curves in the pipe is.
Ideally, we're not going to have many curves in the pipe. Typically, what you do is if you're going to curve a pipe, that's where you put a catch base in or some way to access it. We don't want curves. We don't want bellies in our pipes. We want it as straight. A lot of the thing that I used to do when I was an inspector. A lot of the thing that I used to do when I was an inspector was we'd actually put lights at the end of in the pipe. Take a a mirror and look down to make sure that we had a whole moon. You don't want dips and stuff like that.
Okay. So, all right.
Yeah, one thing I could offer is uh on a good rainy day, uh, we'll sign you guys up for a field tour. If you guys want to go see the project site, watch them thermally fusing it, uh, pulling a piece in. If you're interested, um, get back to the city manager, we can pick a date and get everyone out there to check out, you know, this project. It's been designed for a long period of time. Um, it's a well needed project. And um, thank you to the state for the grand dollars for this project too, right? Um, city has significant contributions also. Um, so but it's a great project. And if you guys are interested in a field trip here in the next month or couple of months, um, contact the city manager. And uh, we can schedule a site visit.
Yeah.
And just for reference for the public as well, two million of this project is covered by grant. So our contribution is going to, it's significant. I get it, a couple hundred thousand dollars, but it's not two point five million dollars. So that's a really positive.
That is great.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to afford the well one pipeline pressurization project to the council action agenda for November twenty-first. Twenty twenty-three council meeting for additional consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Next on the agenda is the contract amendment for the SCADA services, sewer and storm water superintendent Brett Armstrong has details.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, bringing forward a contract amendment to our SCADA services that for our water and sewer. Utilities, um. As you are well know aware of, we have a SCADA, which is the technology that gives us. Control over our water and sewer system. We can operate valves, uh, gives us readings, sustain compliance. For both departments, um, we're in need to update um some software and. Um, to the tune of uh ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, thirty of which is the water utility. And sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four in the sewer utility. This will also add some funds to keep our uh on-call service with our veterans going. So. If we have failures during the night, uh, they come out, we have an on-call service, they help us reactivate the system. And maintain.
All right. You must have a public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mister Mayor.
Anybody like to speak on this? I think so. Do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, we forward resolution number one two nine eight dash one zero two three, the November twenty-first council meeting. Action agenda for further consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
When was the last time that we updated the software or when do we anticipate we'll need to do that again?
Uh, we've updated it in eighteen. And. It's usually. It's technology driven, so it's whenever upgrades come, if those upgrades are compatible with our current system, we don't have to. Um, but it's kind of on the software's timeline.
But we've reached the end of life on the current system, so.
And it makes us vulnerable for security and upgrades that we need to stay compliant.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? This is where we bought a new server for a couple of years ago for this. Yeah. That was barely breathing. All right. Okay, any other comments or questions? Um, we had a motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, we did. We have a motion to second to forward resolution number one two nine eight. Dash one zero two three to the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Tired. Our last business item is a joint mitigation plan. Community economic development director Jay Hill has details.
Uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. Um, uh, I'm bringing forward a resolution tonight uh to adopt the. Uh, multi-jurisdictional, multi-hazard mitigation plan that was prepared by Mason County, uh, from Mason County, uh, received a federal grant. And hired a contractor to do the work. The city was a participant in the plan process. Uh, Chief Beeson, uh, former chief Beeson, uh, was the city's lead on it. Um, but uh several of the other department directors were involved. Um, and uh, we're recommending adoption of this plan. Because it will uh allow us to apply for pre-disaster mitigation grants and it will also make us available for emergency funding. Uh, should we befall a disaster. Um, so uh, we're recommending the resolution be placed on the action agenda. Uh, at the meeting on the twenty-first. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the plan, the plan process.
All right, Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, there isn't.
All right. Who wants to speak? Do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, we forward resolution number one two nine nine dash one zero two three to the action agenda for November twenty-first council meeting for the consideration.
Thank you. Comments or question?
Second.
Oh, second. Comments or questions?
Um, I was just surprised at how many fault lines there are in the Puget Sound, South Puget Sound and how, not just the big one to Fuka one, but the little ones. Been entered here. So I was like, whoa, okay, it's another thing to worry about. Okay, anyway, um. Just so many things to worry about and we just kind of laid it out and I was like, oh man, anyway. Um, you know, the hundred year floods might be coming too. So um, we're at that point. Um, so thanks very much for updating us and getting us ready for something major to happen that we've got back up on. Thank you very much.
All right, any other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to forward resolution number one two nine nine dash one zero two three to the action agenda on November twenty-first. For the council meeting for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. All right, park director supervisor Jordan Crumples has information for us about Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I bring to the next uh recommended art for the art gallery uh on behalf of the Arts Commission. Um, we had a call for artists, uh, and he had us a deadline uh back in October. Um, and we had a total of seven artists submit artwork. Uh, the Arts Commission jury the art on October twenty-fourth. And then tonight we are bringing you those recommendations for the display to start from December fifth. Through February twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four. Um, a couple of the artists that we have for this rotation is Elizabeth Jacobson, Larry Harbaugh, Madison Wareham, Peggy Moore and Tom Ryder. Um, with a variety of arts and we will have some three D art for our display case upstairs, which is nice because we don't get that very often. Um, and so just looking for approval tonight to give those installed and I will take any questions.
All right, Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No public comment.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? Right. Do we have a motion?
I moved to waive the three touch rule and approve the Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations for placement in the Civic Center rotating art gallery.
All right, comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to, I'm sorry. We have a motion to second to approve the Shelton Arts Commission recommendation for placement in Civic Center Art Gallery. We're waving the three touch rule. Um, waving the three touch rule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries.
I just want to make one comment about the art gallery. How much talent is in the city of Shelton? And surrounding. It's just incredible. Perfect place for that. Yeah.
Right. City manager Mark Ziegler has information for us about the LTAC grant recommendation. That's a lodging tax advisory committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, bringing back to you for your action tonight. The recommendations from the Lodging and Tourism Advisory Committee for um tourism grant requests that um would be funded in twenty twenty-four. Uh, there's nine requests uh in front of you tonight for your consideration. And there's been no changes since the brief uh.
All right. You want to type a public comment, Donna? Anybody like to speak? All right, we have a motion.
Mister Mayor, to approve the lodging tax advisory committee's recommendations for twenty twenty-four tourism grants.
Second. All right. Comments or questions? Nope. We have a motion to second to approve the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations for the twenty twenty-four tourism grants. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post motion carries.
Extension.
Oh, yes, sorry. Motion carries. All right, we are skipping F three. And moving on to admini- administration reports.
Uh, you know, Mister Mayor, I don't have much for you to apologize. Um.
We all know you were in Mexico for two years.
A very well deserved threat, I know now.
I I again, I just want to recognize our staff and their hard work put into developing uh this twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Uh, that you reviewed tonight. I know that the ten fifteen minutes spent on it, uh, don't justify the amount of time put in by all of our staff. So just want to recognize them and their hard work, um, as well as their hard work going into this fall season, the the rains that we've had, that I hear that we've had. Um, and and combined with with fall and leaves coming down, um, it's it's a continual uh process. To make sure that our infrastructure's um clean and functioning well and our public is safe. So I really appreciate working every day side by side with uh with these individuals here and I think we're very lucky to have all of them here. So. That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, well, we want to hear a little bit about Mexico because he's hardcore. He flew into Mexico with a hurricane ready to land. And when he landed, they closed his airport. So we want to hear a little bit about your first few days in Mexico.
It was windy and rainy and humid, really, really humid. So uh, it was an experience. We were all safe, but um. But uh, you know, it was uh, it was, it was in interesting to say the least. It wasn't, it wasn't a major hurricane like Otis that hit Alcapoco. Uh, a couple of days later, thank goodness, uh, that we didn't have to witness that devastation they saw there. But um, I real really feel sorry for folks in that area of the world that don't have, that doesn't have the infrastructure that we have. And we talk about um the environment and safety and when you realize the the sewer systems and street systems that are failing. Because of these storms and the environmental impact, the impact to the residents and citizens that don't have safe buildings. And a number of people that we talked to that lost roofs or part of their buildings or they flooded and they didn't have power for for a week or or more. Um, it really makes it um, makes me feel fortunate to um, we're in an area and we have uh individuals. And we have a council and a community that uh works so hard to keep everybody safe and have infrastructure in that that we have available to us.
I appreciate that. Took the fun out of my question, but uh, but. But that was, that was great to, great to hear that, uh, that.
My wife would have a different answer.
All right. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, do anyone sign up for public comment tonight?
We do not have anyone signed up. We do have a few people in. The human audience and I don't see anyone can raise their either. So, don't help me.
All right, that is exciting. Sorry. I didn't.
I had to say, uh. We miss you, Mark, at the park, Parks Department, um, but I wanted to give thanks from the Shelton Rotary Club for helping with the pub park. And that we're having another cleanup at the park at eleven, nine o'clock on the eleven eleven. So on Veterans Day, we're going to go for two hours. So we're going to have eleven, 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 all of us up there. Um, hopefully cleaning up the park and just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done up there. It looks great. I love that we have the mud mitt bags because it's really nice pickup and it's really good to keep your hands clean. Um, and just the the amount of work that at the park and um, I just feel that the other clubs just become a. A very good place to go and recreate Milwaukee Dog and take the family. So, thanks, Mark.
Thank you. And we eliminated the director position, but I believe Mark is still kind of pulling, pushing the button.
And Jordan, thank you, Jordan.
Jordan, we have, we have great staff picking up, uh, picking what we left off, so.
All right, I didn't ask if there's anyone in the audience that'd like to speak a public comment. All right, I didn't think so tonight.
Happy election day, everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I actually pegged this meeting wrong tonight, but um, does the council have a new item for discussion? I I would like to ask if we could maybe get a study session here in the near future on the height limit uh for for town and for around town. And where where would be proper to have taller buildings downtown, would be proper to have apartments and and stuff like that. Um, three-story apartments or whatever. So I, we can maybe get that on the books here in the near future. Um, I know that we've talked about it a couple of times, but we really haven't.
Yeah, we, we can bring you some options. I I know that part of the comp planning exercise, um, you'll be talking about rezoning. And and zoning for multifamily um housing, um, townhouses and things like that. All right. So it's it's a, it's a larger picture than just, you know, just raising height limits, right? There's, there's impacts to and uh surrounding neighborhoods, surrounding properties, compatibility issues, design issues that we want to be able to. Um, I guess strategically discuss, but we certainly can can bring that forward with options and alternatives. So we've got uh better guidance moving through that uh comp plan process. Yeah.
I know density is a goal, so that will help. All right, any other items? All right, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November twenty-first at six P M. We also have study session number fourteen to six P M. This meeting is adjourned at seven one seven P M.